Call the meeting of the City Council and City Cerriman July 12, 2016 to order. We'll begin the meeting with a prayer and followed by a pledge. And I ask Councilman Wright, would you oblige us with a prayer?
Yes.
If you'd join me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for another opportunity to meet on behalf of our citizens. Tonight, we pray especially for all police officers, particularly HPD and the surrounding cities and counties. We pray to you to watch over all of our officers and protect them with your love. And may you guide them as they keep us safe both day and night and hold them firmly in your care should danger come their way. And Father, give them the strength and courage as they serve till duty's end. And one more thing we ask, protect their family and their friends. In Christ's name we pray.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Chris Hayler?
Here.
Wendy Mess?
Buddy Holly?
Here.
Kenyon Me?
Here.
Lonnie Wright?
Here.
Thank you. There is a forum present. I will then open the meeting by asking for nominations for someone to serve as mayor pro temp for the remainder of this meeting.
I'll nominate Councilman Minnet.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Chris Hayler?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Kenyon Wright?
Yes.
So you want me to take over now?
It's all yours, man.
I need a motion to approve the minutes from the July 5 meeting issued.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hayler, second by Councilman Me. Any discussion, changes that need to be made?
No.
Big Non, call the roll, please.
Chris Hayler?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Yes. Sure we entertain a motion to pay the approval of the bills?
Motion.
Motion by Buddy.
Second.
Second by Councilman Me. Any discussion? No discussion, call the roll, please.
Chris Hayler?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
At this time, we would hear delegations from the audience. Do you have something that you would like to bring before council? Now is the time to do that. We ask that you limit your time to about three minutes. We're not going to put a stop clock on you, but try to give everybody else an opportunity to speak that has a desire to. Are there any delegations? Mr. Rogers?
Yes, we would like to propose that we do the trunk or treat again this year that we done last year using the hospital and ask for the fire department, police department.
Is that from the Potter's House?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you're on the agenda, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mike?
Same, sir.
Same stuff?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anyone else? No one else? Move on to old business. Councilman Holly, do you have any old business? Councilman Me?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Hayler?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Wright?
It's not old business, but if I get a change of say, I gotta do it. This Thursday night, Princess Dieter, 5:30 to 7:00, there's a community meeting. Attorney General Jenkins and.
Johnson. Johnson.
I mean Johnson, yes, sir. And others in the Rome County Anti-Drug Coalition. I'd encourage everybody that can to attend that meeting. There'll be people speaking to us who, of course, have had those problems. When you stop to think about it, in society, the drug problem is in the top three and perhaps maybe the number one. And I just think we as a city and citizens ought to band together and let these people who are peddling these drugs, and that includes these doctors, understand that we don't want them. We'd prefer them to just stay out of this town. Thank you.
The attorney has anything?
Last week I mentioned there was a committee docket setting in Chancery Court, so I have the Harriman Hospitality case set for October 11th, I believe. And the Pinnacle Point case was not called on the docket, so I'll have to file a motion to get that set with the court.
Well.
Yes.
So.
I'll do it under department reports.
Mr. Helms?
I'll just have my department report. No business.
We move on to the department reports now. Fire Department, they have a.
No.
No report. Police Department.
Yes, your Councilman Minnet, on behalf of the members of the Harriman Police Department, we would like to extend our gratitude and appreciation to members of the public who've shown a great amount of support to us, not only on social media, but in person with kind comments. We even had Mike Ritter's office sent flowers to the Police Department today for a lot of the events that's taken place recently in our country. And we are just very appreciative of the community support that we've received and say thank you.
You guys deserve everything that you get.
I believe the helmet's on the agenda for today.
Okay, your, I think your helmet thing is on the agenda.
Okay.
Code enforcement, not here. Rebecca?
I don't really have anything new, but I do want to remind everyone that Cobbler Festival's next Saturday, the 23rd, from 5 to 8 in the park. And we have booked a band that's going to be playing at 8. Village Green people are going to be coming. They were here at Brayford Harriman, if anybody remembers. And then we're also doing the outdoor movie at Sundown, we're playing Big Hero 6.
And where do you sign up to be a judge?
I already have my judges. Tickets will be available to the public to come and sample the Cobbler's. It'll be $5 and you'll get to sample five Cobblers. So you can come in and buy tickets and do that. And I closed my deadline yesterday, which is Wednesday, and I got 15 people participating in the Cobbler's competition, so you can come and see my 15 Cobblers.
That's great. Treacher's report.
Couple things. I talked with Sandy McPherson today, and he reminded me we'd be doing sales of the delinquent property for 2012 in October. And I am thinking then that I need to put one out of the budget for potential that we might have to pay the taxes on the properties that we purchased. So just wanted to alert you that that's coming and it might cost us some money not knowing that much. Second thing is, as you know, we went back to the county with respect to our property tax files. And unfortunately, the county is not, I mean, the state is no longer going to produce those in cars that we used to send out. They're only going to do a 800 page that we'll have to copy ourselves. So I'm thinking that we would like to go back to the county record services to do the same kind of mail out that we did this year. They'll just get the file from the state and set it up. It worked so well and we had no complaints, to my knowledge, about the mail out and the form and the information on the form. So I'm thinking that rather than do that one page from the state that we have to copy ourselves, we'll go back to that same process. That's all.
Okay.
Just a couple of things. I'll make note, I did send you out an email earlier today with several pieces of information, so please take a look at that for additional things. But I wanted to let you know that the paving crew currently is working in the Pine Hills area. They're also working some of the Harriman Housing Authority properties out in that location as well, so the paving does continue. One of the notes in the email that I sent you today, which I go into much more detail on, that you can take a look at, but you need to be thinking about because it is a large sum of money that we need to determine how we want to move forward with it. With Congress finally passing long-term transportation authorization bill, we now know that we're going to have somewhere in the neighborhood of $527,000 in surface transportation funds be available to us from now through fiscal year '20. And there are portion of those funds that we've got to have obligated to a particular project within the next 60 days. So like I say, be thinking about that. We've talked very seriously about using the bulk of that money on Margrave to address a number of different issues there, some repaving, try to still some of the traffic that we think we'll have once the bridge opens up. So we think that's the direction that we want to continue to go. That would be what we would need to fill the paperwork out on, but we can address that at a workshop if need be. But next month at one of our two meetings, we will need to pass the form to submit that to T-DOT for the first portion of the funding, or else we risk losing that funding. And then also, when you have an opportunity over the next day or so, please let me know if you will be available for our regularly scheduled workshop for next week. If we feel like we're going to have the majority, or hopefully all of the council there, I think we will be ready to have our initial discussions for budget adoption for the current fiscal year.
Kevin, the $527,000, does that come in the lump sum or is that over?
It's so much over a period of time. For the most part, it works out to around $80,000 per year. But the way they allow you to do it is you can do a project in phases. So the first part would be to do your design work and do your environmental work on the project, and then you can move into construction. You can even do the construction all at once, or you can break it as well into two phases. And they will allow you to borrow against that money. So if you take the little year of all of that, you can pull all that money into one project and use it at one time.
Shouldn't we be looking towards phase two of paving for next year?
We. I anticipate that a big part of the budget discussion.
Yeah, I want it to be. If we don't, we'll, it'd be like the past, we'll do the Vietnam.
And keep in mind, these particular funds that you ask about, part of the reason why, even though Margrave is in a, pavement's pretty rough, part of the reason why we did not include it in this project is because these funds are limited to certain classifications of streets. So if we had to use the money that we borrowed on Margrave, then that would limit where we could spend the surface transportation funding. So by leaving it out of the borrowed funds, we could use surface transportation funding towards the Margrave project. And depending on what components we choose, sometimes they're funded at 100%, and sometimes we have to match up to 20% of the project. So like if it's standard paving, we would have to put 20% in. But if you're doing other certain types of work, such as safety work or signalization, micro placing the signal at Oakdale Highway, those things are funded at 100%. So our match to that $527,000 will be determined by exactly what items we end up putting into the project, but it'll probably end up being somewhere in the neighborhood of 15%. You can include that, but we do have to do the matching.
Going back to that Margrave project, do you have any construction initiation dates or construction completion dates?
On the bridge?
Yes.
Well, officially, construction began, or the contractor's clock began ticking on May 23rd of this year, and they're supposed to be completed by June 30th of next year.
Next year. The reason I ask is I had a conversation with someone today, and they expressed some pretty serious concern about the traffic on that street and the way that we would control the speed through there. Has there been any discussion about the?
If we decide to use these funds towards the Margrave paving, that would be my intent is to build into that, talk with the engineers and build into that some things that we can do to try and slow traffic on that street. There might be a little bit of a gap there between finishing the bridge work and when we can get this construction implemented. But we would have a long-term piece of plan in place. We might just have a few months' gap, plenty to.
Any committee reports? Move on to the agenda. Item 8 is discuss and approve the purchase of tires and front end alignment for engine number two for the fire department. Chief, you want to elaborate on that?
Just that we did have those tires looked at by both our shop buddy at our shop and our service tech in Knoxville, and they're both sitting there on site. They actually needed to do this a while back, but then the rig went out of service for other repairs, some outs back, and it's frontline use again, and we need to go on and do that. We're going to do it out of our current budget, or our, the current year's budget.
This is a first line unit?
Yes, sir.
Chief?
Fire station two.
How many tires is that?
Six.
Okay.
And it's on the state contract, reason the state did.
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of the tires on the front end alignment.
Six?
Motion made by Councilman Me, second by Councilman Wright. To approve that, any discussion?
No.
No discussion? Call the roll, please.
Chris Hayler?
Yes.
Wendy Mess?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
Item number nine is discuss and approve submitting an application for the fire department for the Safe Partners Matching Grant Program through the pool. You want to elaborate on that?
That again is a, is a matching grant through the pool, the Safety Partners Loss Control Grant Program. And that's, it's actually a little less, we're, we're going to put in for a little less, but they need a resolution. Already submitted the grant, they accepted that, they just need a resolution from the board that we intend to, to match our piece. They're only going to put in 2,000, I found that out after, so I'm going to back out one of the calibration kits for this. This is what I'm asking for, is two atmospheric monitors that we use on fire incidents and hazardous materials incidents, flammable liquid spills, gas, going for gas leak spills, those things. We don't have any right now that are functional. They're multi, multiple use for us, and I'm asking for five gas monitors. They'll be used for five gases, they're called five gas monitors. And so I backed out one of the two calibration kits, so we're looking at a total of $4,300 now. They're only going to match 2,000 of that, so out of my, again, budget, at what, 17 budget, we would use the other $2,300. It was something I planned on buying anyway, so this allows me to, and was in my proposed budget.
Is this, is this an annual program, chief?
No, sir, this is a one-time purchase.
Okay.
But the calibration gases, we will have to buy as we use them up.
When you say annual program, are you referring to the equipment or to the?
To the.
The matching, right.
I'm sorry.
That is an annual program. It is a competitive program for cities who are insured through the pool, and we did use that last year.
That's why I was asking.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. It's a one-time purchase of these, right on the.
I move it through.
As Mr. Helms said, it's an annual program.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Wright, second by Councilman Me. Any further discussion?
Money will speak.
Any further discussion? Big Non, call the roll, please.
Chris Hayler?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Rogers.
We thought, because the churches that were involved last year are interested in trying to do the trunk or treat again this year, we felt it was a success and had a lot of good comments, and we would like to try to do that again. The one thing we're needing to know is the city going to do Halloween on the 29th or the 31st? It's a, they're Saturday. Yeah, the 31st is Monday, the 29th is Saturday. And we would like to do it Saturday if that's what the council approves to do Halloween.
I don't think we've had a discussion on when we're celebrating Halloween.
Could we approve it for a period of time, several days in a row, a window?
I don't know. That was Council Phil, I think. You're thinking about the 29th through the 31st?
Yeah, some, some day between, one, one day between, one night between.
One night for the trunk or treat and then the Halloween celebration over the three days? Anybody want to make a motion to that?
I'll make a motion to approve the Potter's House for you and the hospital again this year.
Motion by Councilman Hayler, second by Councilman Holly to approve the Potter's House use of the hospital for their trunk or treat program on the 29th of October?
Yes, sir.
I just want to say you guys did a great job last year. I know that it brought a ton of people to downtown Harriman, and just thank you for being willing to put it on. I know it's a lot of work, and this is the kind of great community partnerships that can come, so thank you.
We appreciate it, and we appreciate the Police Department's help, and we will be asking them for help again this year.
I'm sure they'd be happy to do that. Any further discussion? Big Non, call the roll, please.
Chris Hayler?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
All right, we're going to discuss and possibly approve the Park and Recreation's purchase of football helmets.
Recently, volunteer from the community, a member of the Park and Rec Committee Council, I don't know what they are, but Greg Love, he came out and we looked at the expiration date on a lot of the helmets and the condition, and we found that 47 were out of date. And that wasn't to mention the son that had the molding in it and just shaky face masks or whatnot. But if you see there, I got a quote from Reno's and doing some other research, that's probably the best price per helmet. The, the sales representative was willing to sell 12 helmets and give the 13th for free, and that's the way you see the price there. They're originally around 94, 95 per helmet. If you look in free helmets, you see the price there per helmet. At this point, we have about 70 youth signed up to play football this year. And last year, I think there was around 95 that played last year. So if we make the purchase, we, I'd like to keep in mind that we would like to outfit everybody. We bothered about 20 last, last football season, so I was looking at probably purchasing around that 60, right there in the middle. The only difference is in this year, the helmets that we buy will be blue with a black face mask, and the ones we bought last year were white. And they do refinish those. You can send them back and refinish that.
Alan, about how long, what's the lifespan of a helmet?
Five to seven years, depending on the brand.
Alan?
And, and I take that back. You can send them back to the manufacturer, have them refurbished, and that extends the life, and these weren't.
Alan, how much has Rec got towards this 56, 99?
How much? Well, we have, we have that in the.
In your fund?
Mm-hmm.
So you've got this, this amount of money in your budget?
Yes, sir.
We have, we have added funds in reserve account, athletic reserve account, that you purchase them out of, without purchasing out of the general fund.
And this, this will provide enough helmets for anybody that wants to play.
Yes, sir.
I know the code.
Second.
So you're buying 60, you bought 20 last year, so you'll have 80 new helmets.
Eighty-five, yeah, I'll just pick up, if you buy 60, you'll get five for free.
So you get 65 of them?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Councilman Wright, second by Councilman Hayler. Any further discussion?
And these are, right now?
He orders them to a manufacturer.
Thank you. That's all.
I just have one question. When they refurbish these things, what, do they, they inspect them and make sure that the helmets are not cracked or anything?
Yes, sir.
Then just redo the interior?
Mm-hmm, if need.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Chris Hayler?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes.
And I know the last meeting, we were concerned a little bit about housing them so they don't get the mold. We have a plan to put them in the community center to clear out a couple of those rooms and build shelving and store them there, how they emit and the moisture.
You probably need a fan in there, keep that air moving up.
Right.
What happened? Item 12 is discuss and approve the STD, STBG funding. Any discussion?
That's, that's what I had mentioned here in my report on the $527,000. I hope to actually have the paperwork available for you this evening, but it didn't work out that way, so I would ask council to consider passing over that item, and we'll discuss it at the workshop and have it on the agenda next month.
With council's approval, we'll move that on to our next meeting.
Amen.
Item 13, discuss and approve use of TBA image funds for park repairs. Do you have anything on that?
Again, I'd, I'd like to ask you to move that to next month. Director Hickman has been reviewing some information that we gathered, actually prior to him being brought on board with the city. Thought we would be ready to present that tonight. He had some interesting ideas that we had not previously considered. We need to get some updated pricing on that, and should be ready for that for you next month.
Item 14 is to discuss and approve first reading for ordinance number 0716-01, an ordinance entitled, and ordinance amending the ordinance number 0915-01, being an ordinance to establish a budget for the city of Harriman, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2015 and ending June 30th, 2015. 1st, 2015, and ending June 30th, 2016. We need to read this.
Oh, they do, I, I'm just gonna summarize the, the.
You may read.
Uh, I will. Uh, each year, we actually, um, bring an amendment to the budget to, uh, take the line items that have gone over slightly and balance those off of line items that are under budget, so that we do not have any overages in our line items in the department budgets, and that's what this is. This is amendment to the last year's FY16 budget. An ordinance is titled, an ordinance amending ordinance number 0915-01, being an ordinance to establish a budget for the City of Harriman, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2015, and ending June 30th, 2016, whereas, subsequent to the adoption of the aforementioned ordinance number 0915-01, I'm reading on the 15th day of September, 2015, certain changes have occurred in the revenue and expenditures of the City of Harriman, and it has become necessary to amend the ordinance number 0915-01 to appropriate the additional revenue which has been received and/or to authorize expenditures in certain accounts, and whereas said revisions can be made in the budget ordinance 0915-01 without incurring additional obligations, therefore, or requiring additional emergency tax levy to cover them, and therefore being enacted by the City Council of Harriman, Tennessee as follows. Section 1, the budget ordinance number 0915-01, be amended in the following particulars. Funds of the city budget are to be amended and increased as shown in the following expenditure accounts, General Fund 110, total, uh, increase is $2,228,999.29. Uh, General Fund continued, the funds of the city budget are to be amended and decreased as shown in the following expenditure accounts, totaling a same amount of $2,228,999.29. Uh, in the Solid Waste Management Fund, we have, uh, deep increases of amount of $79.10 and decreases of $79.10. Capital Project Fund, we have increases of $214.33 and a decrease of $214.33, so those are balanced as well. Section 2, be it further enacted, that it shall be unlawful of the mayor or any city council official or anyone having control of said funds in the city budget for the City of Harriman to overspend or to in any way disperse said funds other than as set out in budget ordinance number 0915-01 and provided for by the city charter, said official so acting unlawfully concerning said funds may be discharged by the ruling body of said city. Section 3, be it further enacted, that if any part, portion of this ordinance be declared invalid, that it shall not affect the other portions of said ordinance. Section 4, be it further enacted, that this ordinance shall take effect from and after its passage of publication. Public welfare requirement passed on first reading this 12th day of July, 2016, has a line for second reading, and Chris Mason, Mayor, Teresa Daniel, City Clerk.
Make a motion to be approved, the amendment to the ordinance 0915-01, establish a budget.
Motion by Councilman Wright, second by Councilman Holly, any discussion?
I would just like to, to note for the record, because that is a fairly large number that we're making adjustments on, uh, as you know, when we approved the budget last year, uh, the, the paving budget was up in the air, and we didn't get the numbers in the budget that we knew that we were gonna be doing, uh, some paving, weren't sure exactly when it was gonna fall from the start, one financial year, and so that contributes to our budget.
Well, yeah, there, the two are large, both the increase and decrease, because as you recall, they requested us move funds into a capital project fund, so therefore, we didn't spend the money in the general fund, we haven't spent it in a capital project fund, but we had to put in that we did receive the revenue, and so, the expense increase or decrease in the revenue, basically, moving over to the capital project fund means that those, uh, bond fund or no funds had to be included in the changes, so, if you take away those, you'd have a much smaller number of line item changes.
Any further discussion? Big Non, call over, please.
Chris Hayton?
Yes.
Will you call it?
Yes.
Will you name?
Yes.
Yes.
For order, uh, we normally read our amendment, our, our ordinances, our resolutions, and we failed to do that with the safety program, or Safety Partners Loss Control Matching Grant Program, do we need to go back and do that?
I don't think we're required to on the resolution, uh, we certainly can choose to, but, doesn't like an ordinance, I don't think we have to.
I think when we moved to the new charter, we got, we moved to the new charter, we ended up not having to do that.
All right, thank you. Any further? Being known, I'll remind you all to shut, uh, Harriman, Long County, and we're gonna take a motion to do it.